I think we might have a few stragglers coming in, but let's call the meeting to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could do a roll call, please.
Mr. Beckel, Mr. Campbell,
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald,
Here.
Mr. Gazar,
Here.
Dr. Perini,
Ms. Royer,
Here.
Ms. Smith,
Here.
Mr. Steiner,
Here.
Mrs. Weaver.
Thank you, and entertain a motion for approval of the agenda for our special meeting with All Things Elementary Project. Okay, any changes or suggestions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay, that carries. All right, so item 201 with opening statements. I'll start the evening by welcoming and thanking everyone that has attended in person tonight. Your input is very valuable as we move forward in the project. And I wanted to give just a brief history on how we got here this evening. So pulling from, and I don't know if you can pull up the homepage there for anybody that may want to look through this stuff at home. But from the homepage on our district's website, on the right-hand corner, you can see a tab called Elementary Building Project. If you click on that link, you will find the entire history of how this got started, with links to the various podcasts with different engineers and board members, et cetera, as well as feedback that we received from previous listening meetings, all the way through to some of the history behind it. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew how to find that if you feel that you need more background and things go a little too fast this evening. But back in 2009, the district was aware that we had some aging buildings that needed a lot of help. So they had a study done by Hayes Large. And I want to say that we spent about $50,000 or so on that study. And got a lot of good information from it. They told us what we already knew, that we needed a new building. But I'm not sure it started out correctly in really justifying what we really needed. So it was just, hey, you need new buildings, here's a plan to spend $40 million. It was totally out of our budget at that point in time. So that project got dropped. We had the study to refer back to, but it was kind of left go until about 2011. In 2011, the district spent a little over four, about four and a half million dollars to buy a little over 100 acres of property out behind the high school. The intention for that was, because it was in close proximity to the high school, there were a lot of possibilities, potential future buildings, future athletics, et cetera. Since purchasing that land, we had, we hired an engineering firm to look at turning that into an athletic complex. At that time, I think the pricing came back around 15 or 20 million dollars just for athletics, and we really needed school buildings. So in 2011, the project got dropped again. In 2016, the board changed over a little bit and we started to realize some more that we were spending a lot of good taxpayer dollars on projects and upkeep to buildings that were really difficult to keep up. So we hired Crabtree-Rorbaugh to do a study for us and look at the condition of our facilities so that we really understood, for us to try to upgrade the existing facilities, how would that look as compared to, say, the replacement cost of that same building? And it's a score called FCI, or Facility Condition Index. And at that time, back in 2016, it was discovered that Belfont and at least one other school in our district was in about 85 to 90% replacement cost. So in other words, just to try to bring the building up to current safety standards, not even addressing the education piece, but just truly the, what am I trying to say? Bring it up to code to today's standards. We were looking at that point at about 85 to 90% of the cost of a brand-new building. And so all you did with all that money was put it all into a project that still was built in the 40s and isn't really suitable to elementary education. So at that point in time, we knew we really had to get the ball rolling, but it was, it was kind of dropped again until 2018, when we started looking at ways to develop funding for a project so that we didn't have to raise taxes to the community members. We had some of that feedback that Mr. Bean presented to us on numerous occasions. And then again, in 2019, we hired a firm to look at, to look at the project again, really look at the project from a lens of trying to bring some equity to the district so that we didn't have one brand-new building with all the amenities and two or three other buildings that were in major disrepair. So we went through that study, it was done by Hunt Engineers. We had a lot of good feedback from the administration, I'll let Tammy speak to the education side of things. But what we found in that was, in order to try to bring total equity across the district, again, the price range was just out of reach of what we could afford to do. So we were starting to gain some traction, though, and we're excited to move forward. However, as everyone knows, that's about the time COVID hit in 2019, and all momentum was lost, and we were just trying to figure out how we could keep the doors open and keep our kids in some form of educational setting. So we lost a few years' momentum through that process, until we started up again last year in tying up with SiteLogic, who you'll be hearing from this evening. He's running a little late this evening, but he will be here. And also through KCBA Architects, who's here this evening to talk about what their piece of this pie is. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows, and you'll see, you'll see this evening, there are a lot of rumors that go around, and it's typical, but we are not replacing all four schools, it's just not in the budget. And so what we decided we wanted to do is have the engineers and architects approach this from the standpoint of, let's verify the program that we had intended. Do we really need all the building repairs? Do we really need all new buildings? What are our educational needs? And Mrs. Bernerford can speak to that. But they really approached it from, how do we get the best bang for our, for our tax dollar in the district? We don't want to build a school that's too large and waste money. We don't want to build a school that's too small and be stuck in three years when, when we have more development, can't house enough kids. So, so that's really how this latest effort got started, was through the lens of, how can we get the most efficient design and make the most of the tax dollars that we had available? So I'll just leave it at that and ask Mrs. Berner, if she wants to speak to how that process got started and how they looked at it from an educational standpoint.
So last summer, I think we met with Damian Spar from SiteLogic. He is on his way here, he had to take his cat to somebody first, but he's on his way here. And we met with him, and he talked about how we could get this project started. SiteLogic is a, is a construction manager firm that we would use. We were fortunate in that we kind of had a tryout with some of these folks and some of these firms to see how they were going to meet our needs and be responding to our needs. So the board chose to select Damian Spar from SiteLogic to kind of get the ball rolling. What does this look like? We have all these studies and all this information. How can we use that then to move forward, as Mr. Gazar said? My role in all of this is, is that I was, I've spent 28 years of my career in an elementary school. And so I have a lot of background in elementary, and I, I feel like I, if what I don't know about an elementary educational program, I'll research and find out. So most of my time in the last six months has been working with, with Mike Kelly from KCBA, talking about what do we need for an educational program. I think Mr. Kelly's going to talk about the Goldilocks effect, what's too big, what's too small. So I've spent a lot of time trying to, to research and trying to find out what the best educational program might be. We need the most efficient design. There are, as you well know, there's a lot of problems that we have in particularly the three elementaries that have not been renovated. Belfont Elementary really has not been touched since 1964, which was long before many of you were born. We know this from studies, by the way, I'm not pulling this off the top of my head, people had to tell me. We have Benner Elementary that hasn't really been touched since the 80s, and we have Pleasant Gap that hasn't been touched since the 80s. Marion Walker, for those that are new, was renovated, when the high school was renovated, in 2008, 2007, somewhere around that time. And of course, the middle school was renovated in the 90s. So we know that we have a high degree of need in the elementary program. We know that we have an elementary school that is not conducive to elementary education at all in Belfont Elementary. We know that there's so many issues there. There are safety issues because we don't have different drop-off points, we don't have, the doors are locked, so it's safe that way. But parking is horrendous there, if you have children at Belfont Elementary, you know what I'm talking about. It doesn't have, we don't have air conditioning there, it doesn't have a good HVAC system. It's sitting in the historic district, to renovate that building, you'll hear through the studies, was nearly $70 million. So it just didn't make any sense, as Mr. Gazar said, to put money into the physical plant. But aside from that, it also is not the greatest education, educational environment for five-year-olds. I'm not sure who decided to put five-year-olds in an old high school, but educationally, it doesn't have the technology components and just, just the piece that you need in an elementary school. And you're going to hear from Mr. Kelly, because what do we want our elementary kids to, to experience in an elementary school? Belfont Elementary just isn't conducive to that. There have been no decisions about what schools we're closing or where we're going. My role is to find what's the most, best educational space that we can make for our kids in the Belfont School District. I believe that when this is all done, we are going to have an elementary school that will be the best state-of-the-art for, for kids in our district. I think it's going to be a community focus, I think there's going to be a pride of our community. I think that in the end, it could be raising property values because I know that there are people that have not moved to the Belfont area because they saw Belfont Elementary as not being a school where they wanted to put their children. So our hope is that this new school is going to bring a lot of really positive community relations. I, I know some of you will say, well, community schools, community schools. I wrote my master's paper on community education and how important the, there is no way that we can rebuild Belfont Elementary in that spot for the same amount of money where we can build on the land that we have. So from all of those perspectives, my role has been to work with, with Mike Kelly and to work with Damian Spar into coming up with an educational setting that would be most conducive. There are no decisions about who's going to be in that building, there's no decisions. We don't know, to be honest with you two, I think if you've read my email, occupancy will not occur until the fall of 2026. So that means that only our current kindergarteners and first graders, so our six- and seven-year-olds, will be the first kids in that school. All of the other kids will have moved through by then. You'll ask why it's going to take three years, and Mr. Kelly's going to tell you why it's going to take three years. But it is future-looking, we, we need to prepare our kids for the future. So that was the other role I had in all of this, is what does the future of education look like? Our, our tech director did a presentation the other night, we're preparing kids for their future, not our past. And so we don't know what the future holds. What will technology look like 10 years from now? So we have to be very forward-thinking, and that's what my role has been, is tried to be as forward-thinking and doing as much research and finding and visiting other schools that I can to be able to bring us, our kids the best school that we can get. As we, as I mentioned, the decisions that, that will occur about which schools, which kids, and things will happen after we're under construction. I don't know, and, and those of you who have elementary kids in the, the district, I'll use Marion Walker if you'd like, they've gone from down to 300 to up to 405 right now, to, it's back and forth and back and forth. Benner Elementary is a good example. When I came to Belfont School District 20 years ago, there were only 160 kids in Belfont, or Benner Elementary. Now they're back up, ballooning back up to 250. So populations change, and we simply don't, don't know what is going to be in 2026 either. So to just say, well, we're going, just going to close this school and just, just do this, we do know that, that Belfont Elementary needs to be replaced. But from that point on, there have not been any decisions made. And I think the board would agree with that, I mean, there's no preconceived notions. What you will hear from Mr. Kelly tonight, though, is one of the tasks that we had was building capacity. What's the capacity of this school? So there's a sweet spot, I've researched, and, and they've, of course, have an immense amount of experience. The sweet spot is about 600 to 675 students, as far as cost goes and as far as educational environment go. And so we're looking at a school that would have the capacity of 600 to 675 kids. That doesn't mean that we're putting 675 kids in that school right away. It will have the capacity to be built onto, it will have, it will have options because we own 107 acres at the top of that hill. So it, it has a lot of potential in everything that we do. And I think that's what you'll hear tonight. Did I cover it all?
I think so, yeah. I would just add, too, that when it comes to location being on this farmland, we tried also not to have a preconceived notion as to where a building should go.
Correct.
But as it turns out, from an access for traffic and the cost of developing the site is the cheapest property to develop that, that the district already owns. So that's, that's kind of why, and you'll hear Mr. Kelly and his team talk about how, how that came about. But, so anyway, just to dispel that notion. And then also, we, we did look at replacing Belfont Elementary where it's at, but it's still, it's cheaper to do it at the new property just because of temporary facilities and construction taking a while. And if you try to expedite construction too much, then there's a premium involved in that, too, at, at the bid time.
And Belfont Elementary is a historical building.
Yeah, it was going to cost over a million five just to put an elevator that, an elevator, if you go buy one, is about 70 to $80,000. They wanted a million five by the time we put it out to bid, just because of being in that location. So, so it's tough. It's a strong building, but it's not suited for the, for the educational purpose.
And I didn't mention, it's not ADA compliant, so we have had special education students that have to be on a certain floor of that building, if you have children in that building. There's no, there's no real access onto the second floor if a student has physical challenges. So there's, it's not ADA compliant. And I think the saddest story that we've heard is that there was a parent who went to Belfont Elementary for a conference and literally had to go down the steps on her rear end, on her butt, in order to get to the second floor, and that is just wrong. It's just wrong in, in so many ways. So that's one of the biggest problems with Belfont Elementary, is that lack of, of ADA compliance.
So we'll, we'll turn it over to Mike and his team, and hopefully, so there's, there's no structure to this evening other than we were trying to hope that Damian could get here by the time we were done talking, or by the time Mike was ready for him. But I do want to say that I'm hoping that you'll also touch this evening on the, the guiding principles, design principles, and ideas on how you've come about your decision as well. I think it'll be important to, for the group to hear that. But I know we have on the agenda that public comment is on the end. Mr. Kelly, that's totally up to you, how you, you or Damian or whoever's at the microphone, if you want to, it's just free-form. However you feel you want to approach that is, we're just going to keep it informal and make sure that everybody's heard. Okay, yeah?
I should also add that through all of this process, Mr. Kelly, his team, and Mr. Spar, has been a constant amount of communication. This was nothing that happened like, they've been presenting at each board meeting, but it's been, they say to me, what do you think about this? Or they say to the board, what do you think about this? So there's been a constant dialogue that has happened up to this point. It has not been, I know in previous experiences, there had been architects that have come in and said, I'm going to do it my way, and here's what you're getting. It's not been that way at all with, with KCBA and Mr. Kelly. We've had a very good working relationship up to this point.
That's great, thank you. And tonight is hopefully the continuation of that as well. So welcome, everyone, this is great to have a crowd that's this large and this big of a group. Shows that there's a lot of interest in this new project and this great opportunity. Kind of as we've advertised as a, you know, community listening session, a feedback session. Very shortly, I'm going to stop talking, and we're going to ask you guys some questions because we really want input tonight. I have a blank sheet of paper. Emily Layutza and Mike Strohhecker are here from our office, two architects with us. We're going to take a lot of notes, we're going to write down some key words and things that you guys may think about when it comes to, what should a new elementary school be? What should it mean to be an elementary school in Belfont for your children, in this site, in this community? As, as Mrs. Bernerford had said, our firm has been designing schools for 50 years. So we could go away and design a school and build it, and when it's done, we'll think it's great. We want you to think it's great, this is your school. So we know how to put a building together, we know that the foundations of, of natural light and ADA compliance and school security and things like that, and the importance of all of those things. We have our priority list. Tonight, we're here to really listen to you and gather your priority lists. This is a tremendous opportunity. You're building a building for the next seven or eight generations of, of students and families in Belfont. So we want this to be a community effort, we want this to be a community project. This is day one, we were essentially, or day two, we were hired on Tuesday. As you mentioned, it's a three-year process before we're opening the doors to anything. That first year is designed, a year, the entire calendar year of 2023. We'll be back monthly, certainly in the beginning of this, it may even be multiple times a month, to get that feedback from administrators, from teachers, from students, that's always fun. You know, to bring high school students in and go, remember what it was like to be in elementary school? What do you think? You know, here's your opportunity to, to help out your younger brother and sister. And certainly to hear from the community as well. It'll be a year of design and documentation and permits and things like that for, you know, traffic and stormwater management and all those things that engineers need to do. But during that time, again, we want to hear more feedback. And we'll come back with floor plans, and we'll come back with renderings and things that are a little bit more precise. At some point, probably in the fall, we'll have 3D animations where we can walk through the building virtually, so you'll all kind of know what it looks like to walk through the front door. But tonight, we're starting from scratch, literally a blank sheet of paper to come back and say, what do we think this wants to be? Two years after that of, of building, once, once the building starts, once construction starts, we have a little less choices to make. But over this next year, this is the time that we really want some input. Even, you know, again, they said go on Tuesday, you'll be at a ribbon-cutting August of 2026. So write that down in your calendars. It's going to be a while, so that takes some time. And during that time of, of construction, like I said, there's, there's a lot going on up, up on the hill. What's nice is it's not a renovation or a messy thing or something like that of, of an existing school where kids may need to be displaced during a renovation. That construction is pretty isolated up there. And when it's done, there'll be a year where those students will move in, those teachers will move into a brand-new facility over the summer. So with that, first question that I always like to ask, how should a child feel when they walk into a brand-new elementary school? What are your priorities for this opportunity? We're going to put everybody on the left on the spot, you looked up first. No, you looked up first. We'll start over here, anyone that would like to start, please get up, just say maybe a word or two. Hey, this is what we think a child should feel when they first walk in. Or here's my concern about what I would like to include in that new school. We're going to ask a bunch of different questions. We're going to get specific about art and music and outdoor learning and play areas and things like that. But over the next, let's say, 30 minutes or so, we really want to just kind of get some feedback back on a couple of topics. And Emily's going to write down words, sayings, ideas, and things like that. So start with that section. You guys get to go first. So we should be able to hear you, and if you're going to have to swing cameras around, if that's all right. What do you think? Building a brand-new school, what would you like? All right, we'll come back to your section. There you go, I liked you already.
I just want to pause and thank Tammy for your visionary leadership in forging this path for the community. I mean, we're all here because we are so invested in our community. My husband and I have kids that are graduating in the next two years, but we are still so invested. I, when I, when I imagine an elementary school, the first thing that comes to mind is the, the faculty and staff who built the culture in that building. They need to be proud of where they are, they need to have the resources within that facility. They need to be proud of where they are. They need to have the resources within that facility. Our both of our daughters went through Belfond Elementary. I think I'd be remiss to not mention the amazing experience they had there, even though the building is what it is. The teachers are absolutely phenomenal. That was 13 or 14 years ago. So things have changed and I'm sure that the resources that they need to do that stellar job aren't there anymore. So I think it really starts with, the building has to support what the faculty and staff need to do their job because they build a culture that the kids come in and see. As soon as they come in the building, they're greeted by the faculty and staff. They have to be proud of where they work and supported in that environment in order to build that culture for the kids. It's the first thing they see and notice.
That's great. As part of the process, probably later in the spring, we'll be meeting with teachers from a variety of the schools and asking that exact question. So we'll have ideas about, hey, here's a basic layout. What do you think? What are areas that are specific to your needs? Art, music, special education and things like that. So getting that feedback from teachers is important. You did great. Anyone else on the, on the right have general ideas? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm curious to know what the plans are for physical security and safety of children at the school. I'm also curious to know how to keep the kids environmentally comfortable. Whether it's hot day or a cold day. A school that is easy to navigate for a small child. Not amazed of many hallways that seem difficult for adults to navigate. I'm not sure how many floors are being proposed for the school. But easy access to get from floor to floor.
No, those are all good comments. So part of that, I'm on the governor's school safety committee, on a variety of different school safety committees as well. That is, you know, easy to say the number one priority, but it absolutely is the number one priority. One of the challenges of older schools is it wasn't really meant for some of the security challenges that we face today. So there will be immense amount of security concerns and issues and things covered in meetings coming up. We're going to have a meeting as we develop the buildings further with some local first responders as well. Because we, again, have ideas of school safety and what should be standards and all of those things. And then we want to sit down with your first responders and say, hey, here's our plan. What do you see? What, what do you see as far as the equipment you have? Issues that you may have with, with that site or anything that we're not thinking of. So school security is absolutely the number one attribute from just modernization of materials, locks, cameras, secure vestibules, you know, things like that. So all of those things will be absolutely implemented. You talked about environment inside the building. Everything is state of the art, code compliant HVAC systems. So heating and air conditioning, kind of a basic, but I know some of the elementary schools now don't have air conditioning. And when they don't have air conditioning, they also don't have air filtration systems. So in the newer buildings now, there's filters, things for dust and, and, you know, just making things a little bit nicer in the air. But we also use, since COVID, bipolar ionization, which is another way to clean the air as it's being filtered through the school. Things like nurses' offices, janitors' closets and things like that with direct exhaust going out of the building. Now I'm getting a little specific, but those things are all certainly implemented as well. You talked about ease of access. Mrs. Berniford mentioned ADA compliance. So keeping things primarily on one level. Now, we think there may be a, one part of the school may be a two-story area. The reason to do that is as you stack things, you have less foundations, you have less site work, you have less roof. It is a bit more energy efficient and a little bit more cost effective to have multiple floors. And that doesn't mean 10 floors, but two floors is not bad versus, you know, Belfond's kind of three, but they're kind of disconnect. So it's almost like four. So this would be an area that at maximum I would see as two stories. But certainly there would be elevators involved. Most of the academics and certainly all of the community functions would all be on one floor to make that very easily accessible as well. Some of the, and we kept everything very diagrammatic, but if you see the images that we showed on the wall on the right, having things like separate parking lot and parent drop off areas from separate bus loop areas is a great way to organize things. It's also very safety conscious for outside of the school as well. As everybody's kind of coming together, we always kind of joke, you can train the, the bus drivers. You kind of can't train the parents. So the parents come in, they loop, they get out. The buses have, they go up a little bit further. They have their own separate loop as well. But all of those children, whether they're walking in some cases in the neighborhood up here or arriving by car or by bus, are all entering the same front door. So we have eyes on everybody. Everybody's coming in one spot, not 15 different doors kind of surrounding the area. So again, the security from the outside of people coming into the building. And then certainly, you know, when the bell rings and all the doors are locked, then we have one place of entrance for visitors. So having that, you know, known identifiable front entrance is a big part of security. So I kind of ended up going back to security. But yeah, I mean, all of those points are, are, are great and will be, will be addressed.
To children of that age that if they do have anxiety about coming to school, somehow maybe reduce it a little bit. Facilities for faculty and staff to be able to go away from their classroom to do work, planning, discussions, whatever, those types of things.
No, that's good.
He pretty much alluded to children feeling safe in a building, which I think is one important aspect, probably the most important. But when they come in the front door, that it is inviting to them, that it's cheerful, they feel welcome there. And that they have basically space to do the activities that they need to do as an elementary child. The other thing that I think the district is lacking in every area is suitable auditorium, space for concerts and plays and, and activities like that. Our elementary students cannot have their programs at their own schools because there's not enough space for the parents or the children actually, let alone the parking there. So that's another thing that has been waiting for a long time in our district. And it could also then be used hopefully by the community as well as a sizable, appropriate library.
No, that's perfect. We're going to talk about several different options for assembly. You know, again, cost is an issue. We want to make sure that we don't have, we're not overbuilding some things. So in a lot of elementary schools now, we're seeing separate gyms and cafeterias. And that's one of the things that are programmed for this space. So there would be a gym, a slightly larger gym than you may see in an elementary school. Why? Well, the high school is right across the parking lot. The middle school is right down the street. If we build, let's say we build a gym that's this big. Well, all right, kids can run around in here a little bit, but it's not really conducive for youth sports and things like that. If we build it just a little bit bigger and a little bit taller, well, now all of a sudden, we have a place where JV basketball could practice. We could have youth basketball leagues. I'm actually missing my son's basketball game right now. They're playing in, in an elementary school that is a slightly larger gym. So it has like a full width three-point line, but it's not the length of a high school gym. But they can have youth basketball and programs like that in there. They have an adult volleyball league in one elementary school we just put in as well. So those types of assembly spaces and community spaces are something that we, we've programmed. That's in the, that's in what we're thinking of the cost of the, of the, of the school right now. Cafeteria space as well. So is that something that wants to be set up for community meetings like this? And then a stage, you know, should the stage be located in, with the cafeteria? Should it be, because cafeteria might be a little bit smaller. Should it be located with the gym? All right, well, that's a larger space. We could, we could have more people involved there. So those are great questions and things that we'll study and see which option works out best. But that, that's the desire to make sure that we have a performance space like that available for students. And, you know, a large enough area for parents, grandparents, cousins, uncles, everybody that shows up for the real cute little kids singing.
Like the gym area and even the, you know, where there would be a stage or an auditorium, so to speak, is really looked at district-wide. That's been a waste of money in renovation projects in this district, particularly right here in this school. You know, there's, there was supposed to be a gym here of regulation size so that we could have more than one GIA event here at one time. And that didn't happen. And then, of course, it wasn't used much as an auxiliary gym. So if we're going to spend all these millions of dollars, there's already been millions of dollars, in my opinion, that have been wasted on 25 to 30 years' worth of demographic studies and everything else. So let's just do it right this time. And, you know, go from the athletics at the high school down to the elementary levels and utilize and build what we can do to accommodate across the board. We have more athletic teams than we have the facilities to accommodate. And it's because there was just no looking at the big picture. So that's.
The big picture parts of the project is looking at the site as a whole as well. There's some planning for flattening of some areas. That could be natural grass. That could be used obviously for recess and things. But maybe that starts to be developed as an area for practice fields as well. There was an engineering group that did a study for long-term planning on that site for other athletic fields as well. That could be turf, could be baseball or softball, something like that, that could develop outside of this project. But over time, we want to kind of plan for that, again, even if it's not included today, to make sure that we're not putting anything in its way. So the, the school sits where we, we would know it's best because we could also have multiple fields in a softball field and something else down there. The water and sewer that's coming up, we're going to end it pointing in that direction. So we can just easily tap into it later to go down to a field house or an area that we may need, you know, to, to water a field or something like that. So the, the overall site of that is being planned as well, master planned, so that some of those amenities can be developed. So you had your hand in the back there, sorry.
So I have two, two things. So when you're talking about the community, like the gym and stuff being able to be used by the community, has there been any thought about a swimming pool in the school? Is it, can we look at that? We do have a swim team at the high school that we are spending money to bus around. Tony, the head coach, probably elaborate a little bit more on it than I can. But as a community, we can, it's a very big part of this community that there is no pool here. It's big enough that you probably lose people going other places because there is not a pool. A pool is not just a waste of money. You can make money on the pool. If you help the community with swim lessons, you can have and other stuff in it to actually help the community. I forget what my second one was.
I can tell you this without, this is my attempt to back away and be very impartial. Putting a pool on an elementary school would be very difficult under Pennsylvania construction statutes. The way, there's two big things. PlanCon, which may actually be coming back, which would be spectacular. The state stopped funding construction of schools about 10, wow, more than that, about 13 years ago. There's a bill now in the Senate to bring that back. So if that came back, that could be a tremendous financial health. That's an aside. The other rule in Pennsylvania is called Act 34. That was back in 1970s where they were, tried to limit how much you could spend on a school building. That limitation is based on how many students you have in the building. In an elementary school of 650, 675 students, that's not a very big building. And to have a separate cafeteria and a gym and all the classrooms and things that we need, we'll be able to make that work under the Act 34 limits. But if you add, let's say, a $10 million pool onto the side of that building, well, now the cost of that project is way high. In an elementary school, you actually don't get credit. Any classroom you have in a building, you get 25 students in a classroom. So they go 25, 25, 25, 25. In an elementary school, they don't consider a pool to be part of the elementary education. So you don't get any credits for a pool in an elementary school. So that, we would not get any credit for it and you'd still have to pay for it. It's a very long way of saying, if you wanted to build a pool, it may be more advantageous to do that someplace else. Adding that onto the elementary school would be very costly and would be very difficult to do as part of, again, Act 34 regulations and things. Go ahead.
I wanted to speak back because we are swim parents, my wife and I. As he said, our kids are bused to Tyrone for swim practice. They use the natorium for swim practice. It's a big bill for Belfond. I mean, it's a sizable bill. Our home swim meet this year was at State College. Our senior night was at State College. We swim at schools with pools in their elementaries. It was once considered life skill. You didn't want kids drowning. We thought it mattered, you know? But, you know, I find it odd that it's not looked at as a part of, you know, any part of education. I would say it's a life skill.
I disagree with you. Again, trying to be very impartial to this. I'm just saying, as an architect, it would be very challenging to build that onto that particular building because of the Act 34 regulations. It's going to tell you $18,000 per kid times 650 kids. It's going to be barely enough that we can build that building. And then if you added a pool to it, you'd be above that.
One of the things I was thinking would be the forward vision. Like having forward vision, Tammy, you spoke of forward vision, building for the future. We got to start looking at things that once, you know, maybe they don't become an expense. They become something that brings in community, community use and can actually break even or profit. Say like State College, they use their pool from 5:30 in the morning till 10 at night. They use it. It's everyday ready. Seven days a week. They're making money off their pool. We could do the same thing with a vision on sports fields. When you, our kids go to State College for everything. It's tough being a Belfond parent, seeing this, being the, you know, the redheaded stepchild in the county or the, you know, in this area, watching our kids not have the opportunities that State College kids have. And I, I don't blame many parents for not wanting to live here or not sending their kids here because the opportunities aren't here. So I think the forward vision should be looking at building sports facilities for the future. You can rent those things out. I mean, you, you can run tournaments and make money off sports fields. You can make money off a pool. It's, I think it's just a mindset. You know, I understand what you're saying, the legalities and the hardships of it. That could be worked with the community. I mean, there's somebody here that builds pools.
Mike, if I could maybe help you out?
Sure.
Mr. Steiner, can you, so we're not ignoring it. So tonight is about an elementary building. So make no mistake about that. And if there is a pool, it would have, it would be separate. But do you want to just give people a sort of a general idea of things that we've been working on for the last couple of years?
Well, just a couple of things. First off, it's a point of pride for the district, our swim team. Okay. First off, let me just say it's a point of pride for everyone, our swim team and how incredibly they perform, giving what was noted, the challenge of having to go to other counties just to find a body of water to practice. That's a point of pride for us. I'd also note the YMCA, we just got information over the last week or two that they're looking at pulling the plug on the YMCA program here in Belfond.
So there's no feeder program at the high school?
It's terrible. Right? And so I think the, the board recognizes that this is something that fundamentally for our students would be important. It'd be important for our community. I just take one step back and say, five years ago, the board identified the need for a track. Our school district literally did not have a track and it had a dilapidated football stadium. And the board identified that and took action and addressed that. And now, now this issue with elementary schools has been ongoing for decades. And again, the board identified that and we're, we're just, we're just a couple of steps away from putting it in motion. All of that to say that if the district had the capacity to do a pool, that's a, a priority. Those other things were higher level priorities. We just don't have the capacity right now as a district to take it. We just don't have the capacity right now as a district to take it on by ourselves. If we did, this board would take it on. We would, okay? Now, the one avenue to potentially get at it is some sort of a public, private, or nonprofit arrangement, okay? The board understands that. We are definitely open to that. I won't go into any more detail past that. There is one entity, group, that we are talking to to try to get at it, okay? We're open to anyone else who could bring something else to the table to be able to work in partnership for us to be able to do it. So the board knows this is a need, and this is, we have space out there that we can fit it in, right? So we're willing and able to do it, but we're gonna need an outside entity to be able to partner with us to make it happen. So if anyone knows, go ahead and connect with Ms. Berniford, you know, and we'll do, this board will take it on. We can, if it's at all possible.
Thank you, Jeff. I mean, I would just add, you know, you don't look at the Bell, or the Center County YMCA because they've worked with bad faith with the Belfont community. I mean, you're talking about forty-some parents that are without, you know, a program for their children due to the decisions of the head of the Center County YMCA.
Yeah, that's disappointing. That is. And we've had discussions with the YMCA. We tried to partner with them early on, years ago, several years ago. We've had multiple discussions with them, and for a number of reasons, it has never worked out. You now know the result of how they feel about the swimming program. And as Mr. Steiner said, we are working another angle. Initial things that I've seen, it's, it could be a very exciting possibility, but it's just too early to let out any details at this point. So I don't want anybody to think we're ignoring it, but we're really focused tonight on, as Mr. Steiner said, we've identified this issue with the elementary building. That's what this program is about. The pool at some appropriate time, we're working hard to try to figure that out, but it's not part of this program.
Thank you once again. I know it'll happen in the future. There's no way this town, growing at this rate, will not have a pool. It's just going to happen. It doesn't matter if it's you guys or somebody else in the future, but you're not going to have more fluent people moving here and just let it slide. They're sending their kids elsewhere to swim right now.
I wish we could share some details that we've seen. We just can't at this point in time. When we can, everyone will be very excited, trust me.
Yeah. On the new elementary school, I think, you know, when the kids go there, they should be proud and happy they have a new school and not scared and not worried, you know, like the first day. So there should never be culminations on the lockers. I don't know if that's a big deal, you know, in elementary, but it was a nightmare in middle school, so no culmination. And definitely have one or two elevators, you know, for handicapped kids or cargo, you know, move supplies. And as far as the swimming pool, we can't really compare Belfont with State College. They're three, four times bigger, they have a lot bigger tax base, but I don't really know how much ground you have, but if there's a lot of leftover ground at the elementary school, maybe like way over in the corner, you could save some ground for years to come if the community could build a pool. Like maybe some kind of a metal roof pool, you know, with heat in it, and a large, you know, a large, real-sized pool, if there's enough ground at the elementary, maybe they could do that five, ten years down the road. We're, I think the community's just happy to have a pool at Governor's Park. And, well, they have one, but it's only open and shut every other year, you know? I guess they're working on that. They're trying to get it better every summer, but, I mean, that'd be nice just to have a pool for the public there, but, you know, maybe if there's enough ground at the elementary, you could save it, you know, for a pool. But years ago, they should've got more ground. I think they had a chance in the early seventies, late sixties, to get more ground behind the high school. That's where the pool should be, at the high school, you know? That's all I have to say.
For the hundred and seven acres, there's a lot of land there, so we want to make sure the school's in a nice space, a nice place that's safe. Being a little bit closer to the road makes some sense because that's where all of the utilities are going up, so there's some cost savings there about not, like if we wanted to have the building in the middle of the field or all the way to the east, it would be, it would cost more to run roads and piping there. So it kind of made sense to be a little bit up towards the top left as you're driving up there. And it also made sense because we've got much more land there for possible fields in the future.
Yeah, you always want to save some ground for future stuff, because this school district's always had problems with ground, you know? They have no ground.
Sorry, I think we're still in the thunder from over there. If you got questions. We got enough over on this side. But as a new parent in the district, one of my questions is, how will this new building enhance the mission and values of the entire district? That's one question. The second question is technology. We haven't really spoke to the technology in the new building. Again, if we're gonna compete with our surrounding school districts and maybe even surpass that some point, what kind of technology can we expect in the new building to help our students learn?
Those are great questions. That's part of my next question for the group, is gonna be about STEM, art, and music. But as far as the mission and values, I mean, obviously, as you can see and as was kind of presented earlier tonight, making sure that we're providing a safe, accessible environment that's worthy of our students. Finding a new building that meets all of these modern energy codes and modern codes for heating and cooling and indoor air quality, all of those things is, portrays part of the value of what public school and public education is. So putting students in a facility like that, I think absolutely shows that, the importance of that. To your question about technology, new school. So we're gonna have a lot more electrical outlets everywhere, plumbing fixtures are ADA compliant, things like that. Wi-Fi is all over the place, so anywhere in the building, people can access Wi-Fi. When you see a building like Belfont that are built with hard stone block walls and it blocks, it might be nice if a, you know, if a train hit it, but as a school, it's tough to allow Wi-Fi and things like that to get from wall to wall. So while the building will be very durable, it's also set up to make sure that Wi-Fi is accessible anywhere in the building, even outside the building. Oftentimes, there's outdoor learning spaces as well. We wanna make sure that students would have devices, teachers would have devices that can work outside as well. Inside the classroom, we'll be talking to the teachers in the technology department about what type of interactive technology you would like. Every time we do a school, I swear it's something different. There's one school that's all Apple, everything had to be Apple, great. The other school had to be all Smartboards, fantastic. You know, so it's whatever type of technology you have in other buildings tends to be brought into the new school as well, but it gives you an opportunity to say, hey, you know what? We wanna have more interactive touchscreens low to the ground so kids can actually get to it. Technology's gonna change every minute or every five years. We wanna make sure when we provide the building that we're providing flexible spaces. So power and data, you know, until they invent wireless electricity, it's gonna need to get plugged in, so we wanna make sure that there's flexible technology things set up in those classrooms and in those educational spaces. When we get to the STEM space in a minute, we're gonna talk a little bit about that. I always like when people say, we need a room for STEM. Great, a room for STEM. What are you doing in that STEM room? STEM's a big acronym that covers a lot: science, technology, engineering, math. You throw an A in there for STEAM. It's like, okay, your STEM room might look very different to my STEM room. What do you want? Plumbing, storage, technology? And then we try to make sure that those spaces are flexible because the curriculum you put in there today may be very different tomorrow. So if it's very much project-based learning and they're doing Lego walls and things like that in the STEM room today, hey, great. If it becomes a robotics studio tomorrow, well, let's make sure there's a hard surface on the floor, you know, for little bots and things rolling around. Let's make sure the Wi-Fi and the, and the power and things like that are there for changing our mind and the curriculum of what STEM spaces may be.
You brought up time, a number of times just now, and I'm thinking from an architectural and engineering point of view. You said this is still in a design stage, and you're giving an estimate for the cost of this final project. There must be a timeframe that you're thinking of as far as a lifetime of the school. I know in some other states, some states deliberately build some of their education buildings to have a limited lifetime, with the understanding that the population is show so changing and shifting that they don't need something that's gonna be there like the school downtown here, you know, eighty, eighty years old. So I'm just wondering, just what timeframe are you thinking for a lifetime of this building? That's a pretty specific.
That's a great question. When a lot of those buildings were built in the twenties, they were built on a science where the sun was bad because they couldn't control heat loss, there was very little insulation, and you just tried to build a building as solid as you could in case something hit it. A lot of times, they were built as fallout shelters. So they were, they were trying to be as solid as possible, and in the forties, there's a lot of great stories about how a lot of guys came back from the army that were drawing army barracks, and they said, make a school. And I said, great, well, what should it have? Fifty rooms. Okay. Long hallway, rooms along the sides. And that was all they did, because it was about putting as many kids in a room as you could, trying to get them to memorize something, testing them on Friday, and then starting that process all over on a Monday. So they, they weren't really designed for flexibility, and they certainly weren't designed for the way education is being delivered today. So knowing that education in the past has changed, and it's hard to renovate a twenty, a building from the twenties, or even from the seventies, we don't wanna be standing here fifty years from now going, who thought that was a good idea? So when we're designing these buildings, we're trying to make them very flexible. So now they're...
But don't you have a timeframe that's guiding that bottom line that you're coming up with?
Well, the timeframe of the project being, we have about a...
A lifetime of the school.
The lifetime of the school, we're hoping is seventy, eighty, ninety years. There's no reason it can't be. Now, you're gonna have to replace mechanical systems and things like that, you know, depending on the roof that's selected, you're gonna do roofing. You know, you look at a school as a, you know, think about your house. If it's a seventeen-hundred-square-foot house, this is about, what's the math on that? Thirty houses. So you're gonna spend a lot of time fixing roofs. The dishwasher's gonna break, you know, things like that that are over time. Now, certainly that, we hope that you don't have to do anything in the first twenty, twenty-five years, but over the lifespan of the building, we want that building to be robust enough, durable enough to maintain all of those things, but also fixable where, all right, thirty years from now, we need a new roof. Okay, that's about when the roof would wear out. But the inside of the building is sound and flexible enough that if we decide to change how we're teaching art or change how STEM is being delivered, have larger libraries, have smaller libraries, have libraries without walls. All of those things can, can change and adapt within that building, that it's not built with, you know, stone walls on the inside, and you really, it's, makes it much more difficult to change.
Mike, I just think that real quick. So one of the things that we've, that we've asked to have them consider is actual engineering of the HVA systems, of the climate in a classroom. And if you've been to almost any room in any one of our buildings, as we're struggling tonight, if a kid can't do their homework because they're listening to the drone of an HVAC, that's not acceptable. So we also wanna look at performance specs of some kind to, to make sure that it is a welcoming, a climate in a classroom or in a community space where we can hear each other. We don't have to have microphones to hear from one end of the room or the other. We have a library space that you can't hear unless somebody shuts the HVAC off. That seems really odd for a library space. So we're trying to address all these issues and actually engineer the product. And one of the things that interests me, and I know a lot of the members of the board in trying to be responsible with our dollars, is to look at not just the initial cost of the building, but what's a twenty- or forty-year lifecycle cost of that building? So you can make a building a lot cheaper and put in HVAC systems that only last ten years, but they cost a fortune to run and they're somewhat expensive to replace. You can add a little bit more to the cost of a project and have a system that lasts twenty or thirty years and only costs sixty or seventy percent of the operating cost of that initial. So when we're thinking about all this, one guiding principle to us is although we want the lowest cost and we want the greatest school that we can get for that dollar, we also don't want to shortchange ourselves because, as Mike just mentioned, we're talking about fifty, seventy, eighty years down the road that we want this thing to last. So there's no cheaper time than to do it now. We don't wanna take out the things that are really truly needed and that make a difference in a student's ability to learn and be creative in that space. So we just gotta be real careful, too, when we're talking about the cost of the project, that we don't strip out things that are truly needed just for the sake of saving a million dollars on a forty-million-dollar project, when you will never replace those five years down the road when you decide it's needed for that same amount of money. So that's, that's another consideration that we've asked them to sort of design into this process as we go down this, this road.
Can I add in one point along with what you just said? When we did tours a couple of years ago to different buildings with architects, you'd go into some of those buildings and you'd have, we have, as John noted, spaces here in the district that you just get drowned out by the HVAC. And you would bring it, bring that up during their tours, and they would always say, value engineering. Because when you get to that point when the price tag is more than what you wanna spend and you start knocking the engineer architects around, they're like, well, the HVAC system should be about two-point-five million, but we could use this one-point-five-million system. And those systems then are the ones that end up having more the ambient noise overbearing to you. So when we get to that final point for the cost, it may be a bigger number, but that's the quality over the life of that building, of the education for the staff, when you talk about the staff experience in their buildings, and for the students in those buildings. So that's just one example where the money is well-spent ultimately for the overall quality of the educational experience.
Mr. Steiner, I will add that as a teacher in this building, my voice was destroyed. It was extremely hard to teach and hard for the kids to hear. And you really noticed when someone turns, when something...
Shut down?
And we were so, Mrs. Elder, you were here back then when we first, were the first people in this building, but that is extremely important. That was one of the biggest complaints that the teachers had, was the sound, so I echo that a hundred percent.
Yeah, as much as we've seen studies about natural light being a positive attribute to educational spaces, acoustics is certainly a big part of that as well, and that gets balanced in with the materials we use and the HVAC system that's used as well.
So earlier, when you were talking about building the school, when you were talking about the money based off of how many kids in the classroom and everything, and you can do that, does office space count towards that as well or anything? Is it harder to then put office spaces in to kind of like move? And what I'm thinking is, if you got Belfont Elementary, you got old buildings right across the street that house an administration, you got the middle school, high school, all up here, and then you're gonna build a new elementary school, but your administration building's gonna be across town. Like, does that affect the cost as well? Can that happen or no?
So the two things Act 34 is looking at is how many kids and how much money. So the more you add to the building, the bigger the building gets, the more money it costs. Just more construction costs more. Unless you keep adding kids to that measure, then you get to a point where now you're spending more than is allowed by the state. We were working on a school in North Hampton, just north of Allentown, that's also including their DAO building. That elementary school is massive, and we had to make everything a little larger so that we had, we could call smaller rooms, full-size classrooms, to get the capacity of that to be eleven-hundred kids, so we had the amount of, we could spend the amount of money that was needed to then add the offices. So anything in an elementary school that's not basically an elementary school classroom is working against you in that ratio. There's enough space in there to have a library and a cafeteria and a gym and the offices, but if you start to add larger other things to it, you'd have to start adding capacity. It's one of those great Pennsylvania laws that's meant to reduce the cost of things by making it more expensive.
I have a question. I remember when this school was renovated and we talked about the reimbursement and what was reimbursable and what was not reimbursable from the state back to the district. So I'm not sure that a lot of people in the community understand that, but is there still the timeframe for when you get reimbursement, either to build a building or to renovate a building, that you have to wait X number of years before the state would come back and reimburse money? So say you messed up something and thought, oh, jeez, we should've done this instead of that. The full burden... The full burden of changing that is then on the district, is that correct? There would be, if it's not after so many years, the state would not give you reimbursement for that?
You're talking about the twenty-year rule of PlanCon. So again, what we were saying before, PlanCon was stopped by the state several years ago. So the state's not contributing any money to anything anymore. Tuesday, there was a, like I said, a Senate bill that went towards starting that back up again. Not to get political, but in the past, there were groups that didn't want to do that. Now there's some changes in Harrisburg, and it looks like maybe there can be some votes there. Call your congressman and let's, you know, maybe we can get that passed and have some, have some funding come back for this project. If that was back on, you'd be completely eligible to have reimbursement from the state. That's based on the size of the building, that's based on economic factors of, of the town. We've worked up in Altoona and Tyrone and, and Dubois. This is an area that gets a, a good amount of, of aid, so you'd be up for, you know, considerable amount of money there. If you're trying, if you had used PlanCon in the past for a school, then they said, "Hey, you're not allowed to do anything again for twenty years." The new program actually allows you to do some maintenance things to the building. So you couldn't add an addition and then renovate that addition right away, not that you should anyway, but you could add an addition, do something like that, and come back and, and ask for additional funds on a maintenance item. That's part of the newer program. But again, until it gets turned back on, unfortunately, there's really nothing to, to talk about in that, in that sense. You guys want your shot back? Anybody on this side?
So does the cost also root improvement? So we've got to have a lot more traffic on that road, right? So what's it going to be the cost yearly for, you know, road maintenance? And then you also talked about security. So you've put the school at a dead end, there's no second egress. So an incident happens at that school, you're going to have a panicked parent, and they're going to jam up that road. So I have a kid in kindergarten now, and in three years, I'm going to have another kindergarten. I don't want somebody at a dead end.
We talked about it.
Where's your second egress? Are you going to build another road to go around?
There are two ways to get onto that property. So part of it is coming before the governor road split, and some of it is after that. So there is, the, the car drop-off and the bus drop-off, while separate, are still linked along the back entrance. So if there's an accident off Airport Road or something like that, people could still get out and go down Governors. There will be a need to improve that road. One of the positives about being along that road is with some of the housing developments and things that are up there, there is electric and sewer and water, but as Airport Road turns off and becomes Governors, that road is not wide enough, not, not substantial enough for buses and things like that. So there will need to be, and there's money in the budget for that, some road improvements there. Traffic and things on and off of that site is very, very important, and that's why currently that's the idea, because you're coming up that way to straddle the two entrances off of where Airport splits. That gives us the ability to say, "All right, hey, there's an accident down there on Airport, we can get everybody out the other way."
And that's part of the road improvements?
So it's a good point.
And all the houses that live there too, right? So then you're going to have a lot more kids there, and you're going to have like vandalism, and then what are those, how that's going to help?
Well, actually, I think it's a nice idea to have that there because, because you've got kids in a variety of areas in that neighborhood there to provide for that community, for, again, the school, in some cases, those kids could walk to school, which would be nice. Playgrounds and areas like that that could be used nights, weekends, summertime, and stuff like that, there's another component to the building to kind of serve those neighborhoods up there as well. So there's some, you know, certainly nice ideas and nice properties that can be advantageous to the variety of neighborhoods and things that are up there.
Do you have a question in the back?
One concern, you touched on it a little bit, Tammy had also said about it, I did the math just really quick. You're, one of my favorite things, and actually one of the reasons we chose Belfon over State College School District, is my children are in Belfon Elementary, and my, I have three of them, and out of those three, one will see this new building. And she is in a class of eighteen. I have a son who has ADHD and is in a class of fourteen, and it's beyond measured to have a smaller class size. You said twenty-five, that's roughly, we're looking about thirty classrooms-ish for students. So my, my brain is just going of, how are we going to keep these small class sizes, which I know Benner Elementary has some smaller ones, so does Pleasant Gap, and those are kind of the three schools that are up in the air. That, I guess as a parent, is my biggest concern, is making sure that everyone can learn fairly. And my second concern would be, as an educator myself, going into a new building, making sure that this space is something I can make my own. I love all of my children's rooms at Belfon Elementary, their teachers go above and beyond, they're cozy environments, they're welcoming environments, and I think we can all agree at the end of the day, if our children are going to learn, it needs to be a welcome environment. So I think that's something to take into account as long, you know, I know natural light is important and stuff, but designing the room that it's welcoming, that we can also put our special touch on it.
Now, that's two good points, and let me clarify the first one. So when I talked about credit and stuff through PDE, those are just PDE points. That doesn't mean you're, you have to have twenty-five kids in those classes. In fact, the number of classrooms that we're creating in this new school is to keep class size down. You could, if it got completely full, and I think you mentioned that earlier, the capacity doesn't necessarily mean that we're filling the tank all the way up. In fact, we're purposely not. We try to design to be between about eighty and eighty-five percent full. That way you are able to keep class sizes down. If there's a boom, say there's a blizzard one year, and all of a sudden, five years later, the kindergarten classroom is mysteriously higher, it allows, we can, we can achieve that without having to move, move buildings or add additions or anything like that. But it's not, it's not anticipated to be that high, it's just designed for that size, and then when we're going through our PDE numbers, I know I'm being filmed, but if we're getting, if we're getting funding, I'm going to tell them there's thirty-five kids in that class, because I want as much funding as I can in that space. So that's a, a, a good question and a good thing to clarify. There's times that they'll say, "Hey, PDE says we can have eight hundred kids in that, in that building." Well, yeah, because somebody filled out the form and tried to get you as much money as they could, and that's saying you're putting thirty-five kids in a class. You wouldn't typically do that, or to your point. The other part about elementary school teachers, my wife's a speech therapist in an elementary school, it's, it's always the desire to make sure that that can be as independent as possible and decorated as possible. We try to make sure that every classroom has some sort of a ability to have something outside the classroom, something inside the classroom. Try to make sure there's a lot of storage in the classroom as well. Elementary school teachers are great, they hang on to everything. So there's just, if we can get it off the floor, we've been in classrooms where they'll say, "Our classroom's so small," and you walk in and there's Tupperware containers all over the walls from, you know, Thanksgiving of nineteen eighty-five decorations. It's like, "All right, well, let me find a way to get more storage in areas so that if you want to keep all those things, we can keep those in areas to get all that stuff off the floor and provide a little bit of a larger space." So our focus, our advice on day one in the classrooms is get as much storage in there as possible, then get as many tack boards, whiteboards, things like that as possible to be decorated, and certainly have areas outside the classroom for each individual classroom, and then be able to have essentially art displays tastefully throughout the building as well, whether that's something tacked up, you know, little drawings that, that the kids do. We're seeing a lot of schools now ask for even smaller monitors that can be placed outside, you know, in hall, in hallways. So, you know, in, in February, everybody's excited about Valentine's Day, so they'll have a Valentine's Day parade. You can take video, plug the video with a little flash drive into the side of the TV, and now as the kids are walking around, there's videos of us, there's a PowerPoint of all the things that we did. So that can be digitally created as well and then implemented in some of the things in the classrooms as well. So when we meet with all the teachers, we'll be looking for those types of suggestions, but that's kind of where we try to start. Back over there.
The road thing, not that shown in there, but out on, from Airport Road out onto Bishop, Bishop at that point, that's a somewhat difficult intersection to get out of right now. Is there, was there anything in the plan, or is there anything in the plan to put something there for safety-wise, like another light? I mean, has that been talked to, looked into yet?
That's all being studied now. Again, there's, there were a lot of improvements made because of the residential neighborhoods that are up there, so that's why it's nice, a lot of the, somebody ran electric and power and all that stuff up there, but it wasn't planned to have twenty school buses. There's school buses up there now, we were standing there today, and there's, because they're servicing that, that area. But there will absolutely need to be some road improvements and even the intersection down on the State Road, just to check to make sure, do we need a right turn lane, or a left turn lane, or a light? So that traffic study is happening now. The other group we can ask questions to is this group over here. Any, you got one? All right, you guys coming up next.
This is more for the school board. You're definitely building one, a new school at the Governors' Park. Could you tell us, you'd have a rough idea of the price, but are you also, are you going to keep Benner and Pleasant Gap open and fix them up gradually? Or is it everything going to the Governors' Park?
Do you want me to answer?
Sure.
There's no, in a few minutes after Mr. Kelly's done, Mr. Bean's going to talk all about the financing and how it's going to cost, and how we're going to pay for it, and how, how he's going to save you a lot of money. No, he's got a pretty tight wallet sometimes, but, so we're going to talk a lot about the finances, and that, and that's coming up, if you can just hold on. The second part of that is, is no, we don't know what we're doing with the other schools at this point. We're building this new school, knowing that it's going to have the capacity of six hundred to six hundred and fifty students. Which students there are, we don't know, because we don't know population. There has been talk among the board of how do we create equity in these other schools? So let's say the population of Belfon Elementary blossoms, and there's, they have five hundred kids going into this new school. Well, that doesn't leave capacity to, for, for anyplace else, but where is the population going to be? So we have talked, and, and I've actually worked with Mike a lot, about how we can bring equity, equity to the other schools without a, a great amount of cost to begin with. And one of those ways may be to shift some of our, our needs or our classrooms to the new building, and I'm just giving an example, this is not in writing, this is not, it's don't, please don't quote me. It would be possible to move one of our, our Life Skills classrooms to the new building, because it would be much more conducive for our Life Skills classroom, and then that frees up space at Pleasant Gap Elementary or, or where, anyplace else that we have that space. So there's been a lot of talk, and Mr. Kelly and I have talked a lot about, okay, so if we can't afford to, to bring Benner or Pleasant Gap up to, to speed to what we need, how can we try to create some spaces, try to create some equity? I'll be honest, in the studies that were done previously, there is no equity in the elementary program in this district right now. What is available at Marion Walker is not available at Pleasant Gap, what is available at Pleasant Gap is not available at Benner, so there's, there's no equity. So as we look at building this new building, we are certainly absolutely looking at how do we create, or how can we build some equity in these other elementary schools, including Marion Walker, because Marion Walker has some things that need to be improved as well. So how do we, how can we do that very responsibly with taxpayer dollars as well? So that is, that has been our second task, and we've...
Yeah, I just, there's a lot of people live up in the Benner Elementary area. I just hope you don't close that school down at least, you know, maybe a year or so now, but for the, you know, foreseeable future, you should maybe keep that open. I mean, it's, and there's some ground there too, but, because, you know, you get into all these busing issues too, you can't bus kids for an hour, you know?
Did I, did I address the equity piece?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because we had talked about equity, and we, we actually, Mr. Kelly and I toured all four elementary schools. We spent the better part of a day in each of the elementary schools, talking about how we could build some equity in all the schools.
Go ahead, did you want to say?
No, go ahead. I think you have a question back there.
I was just turning it back if there are any other comments from you guys, or, you know, obviously we want to get comments from board members as well. Go ahead.
This is more for the board. I think one of my concerns, and I don't know if anybody else in this room has this problem, but with this new school, what is the plan for after-school care? Because I know as a mom of three, there is nothing. The Y is full, the daycares are full, is there going to be the ability that if we're putting all this money into this new building, to offer an house like State College hates comparing, but comparing it to State College School District, they have an in-house program right there at the school. The kids don't leave the school, they stay there, they're able to, because of these great community spaces within the school, stay after school and offered a quality program there at school. Is that something that eventually we would be able to do with this new school that, you know, would fill that need in our area?
We've talked about that at, at many meetings, and we know that some of our brick and mortar charter schools and some other schools in the State College area do those kind of things, and we know that if we're going to, I don't know if competes the word, but if we're going to be responsible about, we have a blank slate here, that's, it's something that, that we have, it's a discussion we have to have.
It's not just after school either, it's before school. Before school, it seems to be as much of a parent need, and it's hard, to be honest, because when you talk about these daycares, just like everything else in our society, there's just not enough people to do it. But, but your point is well taken, if we provide something in-house either before school and/or after school, well, it is a blank slate, so it's a good point.
I just want to, because I'm one of those moms that I'm in that line, and I'm, I feel guilty, my kids are at the door at seven thirty-five, bye, got to go to work and get, you know, rush home to get them so that I can meet those hours without after-school care being an option, and without before-school care an option.
We've, we've studied many times how to get our students that are in charter schools back in our home schools. We feel we offer a better program at a lower cost. We don't feel that way, we know it. But nevertheless, when we survey people that have left the district for charters, that seems to be the number one reason. So, so it's, it's not something that's being ignored, it's been discussed at, at length, we just haven't figured out how to make it happen yet, but the discussions are happening.
That's, that's a great example of something that we can plan for.
Right.
Now, if the policy happens, if the program happens, great, and sometimes it's as easy as just another storage closet in some areas, where you go, "This is the room that could be before and after care, but let's make sure we provide additional storage over here for their paper and crayons and things like that." So just adding a closet can suddenly make a space that much flexible for a program if it happens in the future. So those are, again, good comments to make now, so that if, you know, five years from now it's added, and then somebody goes, "Oh, wait, we better add another room on the side of, of the building." You know, those are some attributes that we can think about ahead of time. Do you guys want to make comments as well, or, or ideas, or things you'd like to see in the new school?
I, I want to hear from the community, but I reserve the right to jump in once in a while and clarify things, so, but a lot of the things that are being mentioned, we have discussed, but it's, it's good to get just a real pulse of the community. You guys have come up with some really great ideas, and some things I think that, that as we've seen tonight, there are discussions that we have been having, but we haven't been able to communicate them yet, so this is the first step in that. So we'll just jump in once in a while to clarify as well.
Yeah, I'd say we're really, I was happy to see the turnout we have tonight. I want to thank you all for being here, and again, please, if you've got something to say, say it. This is about you folks tonight, not us.
Keep going. Good. I'll throw another question out, I'm going to go to, but I'm going to throw another question out as well that we started to talk about with art, music, and STEM, you know, specialty programs and things that are successful in some of the other schools that you'd like to see implemented here as well, or some things that you'd like to see started here, and as, as we talked about with equity, hey, if we had a STEM program in this space, or a space for X program here, maybe we could integrate that into the other buildings as well. Think about that a little bit as we, as we kind of jump in for a few more minutes. Go ahead.
I had a question within design. I've traveled to some other community colleges and colleges where they use surface space, roof space to partner with business for solar. Even if you go out to North Hampton Community College, you see their whole parking area is all roof basically, with solar across. Is there any thought of doing something like that, partnering with a private company to, elementary school's not going to use all the power during the summer, the most, you know, profitable time. But is there any thought of partnering with private enterprise to offset cost?
There's a lot of ways to integrate solar into school design, whether it be new or existing. Oftentimes, what we're finding is the cost of implementing those into a project can be a bit cost prohibitive if the, if the district buys it, right? So a lot of times, we'll try to create areas that's solar-ready, meaning we've run conduits and things up to the roof. and things up to the roof, it's ready to go. Whether it's a flat roof or a pitched roof, we can design that with our structural engineer to make sure that it's ready for panels if it was opted to in the future. And then that provides you the ability to call, talk to a private company and say, hey, we're thinking about this, we're already ready to get plugged in, it's already metered, we can, we can, we don't have to run new wires through the building or anything. So we can look at a couple of different options to make those areas solar ready, but it is a bit of a financial challenge for school districts to buy those on their own. And really the amount you need in order-
I would ask the school districts to send a ton of money into, I would ask them to look at the idea of partnering with a private entity that would then make money off the sun when it's producing the massive amounts of electricity in the sunniest times of the year and the school is not using the electricity. Basically renting space.
There's a program with a school we're working with that they, they monitor all of that and they show how much energy is produced in the summer and then how much is produced on a cloudy day in the winter. It's not that different. And it's like, huh, there's a lot of UV rays that still get through the clouds, isn't that interesting? So it's a nice kind of science lesson as well to show, you know, here we are in February, we're probably generating a lot today because the sun was out. So to, to see how much power can be generated, not just in June and July, really throughout the year. But again, all of those provisions and things can be made ready for, for the new building.
Sure.
So you mentioned STEM. I think STEM is like very critical, right, to kind of, and being an elementary school, I think it's even more important to do that as the kids are younger, right? As they get older, you can kind of start to lose interest, right? So you want to cultivate that early on. I think robotics and things like that, I think we have a tendency to cling on to the technology aspects, but I also think it's very important, just basic mechanics, right? Like they need space, they need space to be able to do old school experiments, you know, CO2 powered cars, things like that, right? Ventilation, all the utilities that you need. Cause again, I think as, as kids are changing, the hands-on skills are going away, right? Everybody, everybody's good with one of these now, but not everybody can change their oil. So again, those mechanical spaces I think are going to be important. And I would even go a step further, right? Like as we start thinking about how we're going to develop that space, partnering with local industry, right? There's a lot of larger manufacturing facilities here, you know, how can we optimize and work with them to make sure that we're building the, the local community to support that long-term, right? Long-term growth, that's opportunity, you know, for both the kids and, and the businesses. And then also we've got engineering schools that are local too, right? Let's, let's see what we can get from the engineering college at Penn State, whether it's Lockheed or whoever it is, right? Penn College even up the road, right? Like I think they could provide a lot of input in, in how we design those spaces, whether it be 3D printing or again, robotics, whatever that may be. But I think there's a lot of opportunity there and I think if we miss the mark on that, then that would be a huge miss as we kind of develop this project.
Yeah, that's a great point. An elementary school from kindergarten to fifth grade, I mean, that's six years of development. They actually spend more time in an elementary school than any of the other buildings. So while, you know, the opportunity for a five-year-old may be a little bit different than an 11-year-old, having things like 3D printers and that ability to start making things and seeing things made, taking those things that a computer may be designed and then physically making them with your hands, Lego walls, you know, Cubarts, you know, Cubots and things like that that fly around. Having that space and then the storage for those things is important. We worked with a teacher at a school said, I love the idea of a STEM room, but I'm not bringing my own stuff down there. So if all that stuff's there, great, I'll bring the kids, but I'm not trucking all my art supplies down there. Okay, that's a great comment. So we had, you know, a sink and storage and areas for paper and things like that that was part of that larger space, so the teachers engaged it more. Cause that's important, you create a great space and the teachers are like, I'm not going there. Well then that's not really going to work. So designing that hand-in-hand with, with teachers and we had a couple of comments about that, it's important.
I'll, I'll add in a quick and say that we have a center-ready program that where our schools are partnering with local business. And that's at the higher grade levels, but absolutely trying to find local businesses, see what their needs are for a future workforce and then maybe have them sponsor a 3D printer room or have them sponsor some other tech in a STEM lab is absolutely something we need to look at. It's a good point.
Now the hands are coming up. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's, I mean, are the classrooms all going to have like sinks and like, and are we thinking of flexible seating and flexible arrangements as far as the desks and that and sort, because I know that's huge right now and the kids love it. And like your regular desks and chairs in the elementary world is not really, I mean, we don't, we use them, but that's what we have. But if given the opportunity, I know a lot of, a lot of teachers are going to tables and getting rid of, like they don't use desks hardly at all and I mean, a lot of us, I teach at Belfond Elementary. So I mean, that's something that I hope that is being thought about, is like what we're using inside the classroom as far as that.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great comment about what amenities teachers have and then furniture. So typically, and again, we don't have to do this, but typically in kindergarten and sometimes first grade classrooms, they'll have toilet rooms associated to each room. Those guys might need a little assistance rather than moving them all down the hallway. Sometimes it's a little bit nicer to go and do that. So that was something that can be suggested, that's something that we'll talk about. Typically in elementary schools you see that. And then in all of the classrooms you'll see sinks as well. Again, kids get dirty, you're playing with paste and stuff, so be able to have a sink that a child can get to as well is important. Furniture is a great comment. You guys are about to build a big school for 650 kids, you're going to start getting phone calls from furniture companies. Our suggestion is make them work for you. Hey, that'd be great, we'd love to test out your furniture. Here's a classroom in Belfond and another one up in Marion Walker. Bring us a classroom full of furniture that we can test out. That can be fun.
I've got a problem doing that, in case you were wondering. I, I will say, just to interject, we had talked briefly about furniture and, and what we, what would we actually take from Belfond Elementary to this new school? And I said, nothing. And they said, they said, well, what about the, shut up, no, we're not taking anything, we're going to have all new, like, no. So we've had this discussion.
Yeah, so furniture will be-
No dirt cellar.
No dirt cellar.
No dirt cellar at all.
Amy wants the tables to go. She has brand-new tables that are beautiful. Hers can go.
A lot of times we find this variety and we did that, we fit out, you know, three different classrooms and it was kind of split. They're like, well, we like these, we like these, we like these, we like, you don't have to pick one. So that kind of became a variety where, you know, they had 10 of one, five of another and five of another. So sometimes kids, that's a treat, they get the kid the seat that they can rock back and forth a little bit. There's a lot of studies that show if kids can just move a little bit, they actually focus more. So having that variety and then teachers can trade. Hey, can you give me one of those stools and I'll give you one of the swivel desks? Okay, great. But locking them into that desk chair basket underneath thing is not so great. So that's, we actually have a little bit of time for that. Typically, once, there's a budget associated to it, typically once construction starts, and again, you have two years, those types of conversations and things can happen as well and test some things out. But certainly getting the opinion of teachers is great. Sorry. You were on the side.
During the upcoming year of the design phase, will you have a stakeholder group that is going to be part of that design phase? The teachers, parent professionals, special education parents, community members? How will you select those members?
Yeah, so I would definitely encourage you to let someone know that you're interested in being part of that. I think it's a great opportunity to, you know, when you have an entire district full of elementary school teachers to invite who is passionate about that and who's excited about doing those things. A lot of times in the spring, we talk about, this is the time to design, what would you like, what are the ideas? You know, we have some ideas and floor plans and things in our heads as well, to start vetting those as we go. Then everybody kind of takes the summer off, we don't. But when we come back in the fall, it's kind of like, okay, here's what you're getting now, here's what we talked about, this is what it looks like, what type of file cabinets would you like in your classroom? What type of lighting should we have in the art studio? So now we're going to get a little bit more specific. I talked about that earlier. So there's multiple times to, to invest that time with, with teachers and stakeholders. We had a meeting with the special education director as well, talking a lot about what you were mentioning about, you know, having adequate and appropriate spaces for life skill students, students with more physical challenges. What kind of spaces should that be? Should autistic support and some other spaces be integrated into the school? You know, and what special things and attributes should we have for those, those spaces as well? Sensory rooms, you know, should there be a toilet in, in those classrooms as well? We're doing a, a school now where we're actually putting in a lift in, in a restroom for life skill students, because they're sometimes not able to, to be lifted as, as easy as other students. So all those things will be vetted throughout the year.
Design-wise, is there going to be like kids bathrooms and adult bathrooms in the school? And like a lot more, I just, okay.
And-
I don't understand why that question is being asked.
Certain just building code things that we need. So as we talked about for the classroom spaces, we can elect and certainly do to have individual bathrooms, kids-sized, little tiny toilet-sized bathrooms for kids in say kindergarten, first grade, sometimes in special education rooms as well. There's typically always faculty toilets, unisex toilets accessed off the hallway, those are for adults, not for kids. Say on the other side of the school where we may have fourth and fifth graders, you may find classroom or a group toilet areas kind of as you would typically see. We did two schools at the same time, one wanted the, the sinks in the hallway. They're like, we don't want sinks in the bathroom, we want sinks in the hallway. I said, kids don't get in trouble while they're going to the bathroom, they get in trouble when they're washing their hands afterward. Okay, interesting point. They thought that was the greatest idea, they have sinks in the hallways outside of the bathroom. So those are things that we can talk about as well. But all of those things will be obviously modernized and code compliant.
I'll say too, to the point that was made over here about stakeholder group. So, well, I think one of the things that we're envisioning as part of Mike's normal process would just be, and I don't know what you want to call them, design charrettes or other things, but for example, we already had one design charrette with only principals, all the elementary principals. And it was a very interesting session because it started out with just, what is your input to this design in the delivery of education? So if you have a blank slate and you're going to deliver education in an elementary setting, let's talk about the flow of students. How does, how do the students get through the school? What problems do you face in your existing buildings? How can we design those items out of this new building so that we don't have those same problems? So I just see at different points of the design process, there will be a different group of stakeholders, if that's what we're going to call them, but just different groups. So whether it be maybe teachers will have their own design session to where they can talk about how they deliver education in their classrooms and challenges they face now, things they would like to see mitigated in any future building. So there'll be different groups like that throughout the process. Not just, hey, we're going to identify these 30 people in the community to make all decisions. That's not what we're looking for.
You, you said you're a teacher at Belfond?
No, I'm a junior teacher.
To, to your point, one of the things we always like to ask, you know, especially when we know there's a school moving to a new facility, is what's a very, there you go. What's a, what's a great program that's very successful in your building now that you'd like to see? It'd be in a new environment, maybe that's a good thing and enhanced, but are there holiday programs? Are there, are there specific things that, that you guys do that may be different than other schools that you'd like to see implemented and maybe enhanced in the new building? Everybody's nodding their head.
We have, I mean, we have a fantastic field day, but with all the space that you're going to have, that's definitely something that would go. Holiday shop is something that we put on our gym, so the fact that we, but that's also our cafeteria, so the fact that we'll have two separate areas for that will be nice.
From a pretty urban environment, obviously, to farmland, so that's going to be a big difference. So play space, hardscape play and things like that, we want to make sure is adequate. But you also have a tremendous opportunity for some outdoor learning spaces as well, whether that just be secured kind of within maybe the confines of the perimeter of the school, let's say. But you're on 107 acres. So, you know, are there other attributes and things like that that we can take advantage of, maybe new ideas in a space like that? Yep.
Specific to athletics, now this year wasn't a good example, but ice skating rink, right? I think that would be great. I know we've tried it and Mother Nature doesn't always agree, but I think we've seen, you know, they flood tennis courts or some stuff like that and that would be, that'd be nice because the only option is to go to State College and the free skating opportunities there is few and far.
It's, it's a big site. We're going to have to raise some areas, lower some other areas, kind of flatten some things out. So part of the site design, as we're making the building accessible, we can keep another area pretty flat and all of a sudden, well, that, we go out there with some paint and now we've got the size of a soccer field or, or something like that, that is just about leveling some areas. And it may tier as it kind of goes down the hill there, but we can flatten some areas out. I don't know that we can get it flat and ice surface enough, but those types of opportunities for additional sports and things like that can be planned, even if it's not a big turf field. You know, we have the ability to, to flatten a few areas rather than just make everything on a, on a slant and then you can't really play soccer there. Let's figure out where we want to have some areas for, you know, recess and play, let alone youth sports or, or connected to the high school. Go ahead.
I, I know they all nodded their heads and they're not going to boast, but like, I'm thinking about beyond special ed, I'm thinking about like the math specialist, the reading specialist, the guidance counselor. Are all those spaces as well taken into the classroom count? Cause like I know, I have a kid that has band, is that room taken into account? We talk about sports, we push sports all the time. What about the arts? What about a nice art room, state-of-the-art room with maybe the ability to do pottery or, you know, have adequate space for K through V to create art, to create music? That those teachers also have great spaces as well as the math specialist, the reading specialist, the guidance counselor.
So all of that administration, principals, counselors, things like that are part of the program that we're working with the district to understand. So we say, all right, we're going to have a principal, we're going to have other administrators in the building. We call them itinerant offices sometimes, if there's a, a social worker that sometimes is there, that can be a space that's pretty flexible, but then a school psychologist could come in on other times as well. So we want to make sure how many permanent offices we need and then how many offices are kind of floater offices for specialists that may kind of come and go. I told you my wife's a speech therapist, you know, having areas for that is important. When you have a school at 650 students or so, you have the ability now to have a little bit more full-time staff versus a smaller school of say 150 or 200 where the art teacher's here Monday and Tuesday, but then they go someplace else Wednesday and Thursday and now the resources aren't maybe as plentiful because they've got to be split. If we have 650 kids and the curriculum works out where you can have a full-time teacher there because we have enough kids to occupy their time five days a week, well now that room can get a little bit larger. We can spend a little bit more resources into that, we can provide pottery or whatever other types of, of art they may like into those spaces. Same thing with music as well. These guys have heard it 100 times. My dad was an instrumental music teacher in elementary school, so they tend to get a little biased when it gets to the music program.
I guess another point to you is we talked about these fields and extra space. What about a playground? Cause I know, so we're a blended family and I have one in State College, they renovated her elementary school and they got logs to play on. And I, I understand the push for naturalistic play, but my kids love the climate at Belfond Elementary. Like that's the highlight of their days, being able to go out and take appropriate risk in play with supervision and be able to play on something like that versus a stack of logs and a, a couple swings.
Yeah, so absolutely. Of the budget, that is a line item for those types of areas. Again, as I said earlier, we've got six years of kids, they're going to physically double in size, so having one set of something is probably not going to be adequate for that big of a swing. So again, do we have an area that's for kindergarten and first? Maybe there's a little bit there. Maybe there's another area that's for designed a little bit more for students that are a little bit older than that. How do we make that area handicap accessible? How do we make that area more obtainable to other children that, that have special needs? So that in itself is a whole design exercise. So, that in itself is a whole design exercise. We have spaces kind of allocated for that. Should that be in the back of the building, kind of hidden? Should that be maybe a little bit more towards the front so that it can be used by the community, you know, the bus loop or the parent loop? You can drive there on a Saturday, park in the parking lot and go and take your kids to the playground, even if you don't live across the street. So, those types of, that type of thinking is what we wanted to start doing now. Fence those areas in as well. Worked with a school that said, "Oh, we need a fence." And I was like, "Oh, is that to keep people out?" I said, "No, it's to keep the kids in." Because you'll get five-year-olds that'll just take off. And if there's a road or a tree line or something that you want to make sure that a child can't just run and, you know, now all of a sudden may be missing, we have an area where we can fence some things in, little fences, but just to make sure that, you know, a child that may want to run doesn't run away. So, those types of safety and security issues are thought of as well. So, there absolutely is a place for that and a time to talk about the design of that.
So, back to the design, is it what people talk about when they're talking about outside recess and everything?
Luckily, this year it hasn't been too bad, but when it's cold and snowy outside, kids can't go out for recess. And then they're stuck in the classroom. I have a nine-year-old son, he doesn't get that energy out, he's crazy. So, thinking of inside the school, other places for them to go and also not disrupt, like going into the gym. Well, if you have gym class at that time, other students are in gym class, now you're bringing the kids that are in recess in the gym, it doesn't, might not cohere if there's other spaces for the kids to go on.
So, that's where having that larger gym helps. So, and again, in an elementary school-sized gym, there's no book that tells us what that is. What we've been doing is making them kind of small middle school sized, as I said before, like a full three-point line, but maybe not the same length. A net that can go down in the middle. So, now you have a space, in some cases, larger than what you have now, even if we split that gym in half. So, on that snowy rainy day, the gym teacher goes, "Hey, no worries, I'll be on this half, recess can happen on the other half." That's a nice way now that you do have an indoor space. Courtyard spaces as well oftentimes are created with turf or areas that are easily drained. Not turf with the pebbles that you tackle a kid on for football, but an area that doesn't have to be mowed and two minutes after it's done raining, it's dry and students can go out there. We saw a lot of that during COVID. That was a great way that they could bring kids outside and sit them in an area that was not wet, not muddy, and teach them outside and get some fresh air and all those things. So, that's a space that's being considered as well, that could certainly be used for, you know, "It just rained all night, everything's muddy, let's go out to the courtyard." Because that actually drained pretty well and we can play out there and let kids run around a little bit.
I can just speak real quick to the comment that was made over here too. One of the design principles that we've also asked for is, we want our schools to be the focus of the community. So, it's community dollars that build these buildings. And so, it's not just for elementary education, it's a space for the community to use and we want, one of the reasons we want community input at multiple stages throughout the process is we want you to feel that this is your building. You can go and use it. The playground, for example, yeah, there might be a fence to keep kids in during the day, but then the fence is open so that the community can use it in the evenings and off-hours. So, it's not just the elementary school, we want this to be the focus of our community. We want it to be a community space.
Keep going.
Sure.
So, going off of the community space, will this be your vision of it, being able for the community to use it? Will you be using the rules like the track where you can only use it on Saturdays whenever the sun's shining and it's beautiful, or will it be more conducive for actual community use?
Well, so let me just speak to that since. I've made the comment. With the track facility, so we just had an athletic study done, and just to give you an idea, where a lot of fields in a typical turf field can support 75 events per year, we have 930 events per year happening at that track. That's how badly that track was needed. We didn't realize it until after, you know, build it and they will come. Well, the track is so overutilized now that space is holding 936 events per year. So, that's why, and we wanted that to be a community space and we do have it open, we just asked that, obviously, if there's football practice or some other practice, lacrosse or something else, you can't go out on the field and interfere with that practice, but I'm pretty sure that we've left the outside track open while we're doing that and some other times. So, I know it seems like, hey, you said this was going to be a community space, but boy, our time is really limited. Well, we had no idea that we were going to hold 900, over 900 events there per year. So, that's part of that.
The design of the building, I'll point out too, is that we've been talking about kind of like a basic layout, and the basic layout of the building would have what you call the community space versus the academic space. So, the community space would be the gym, the cafeteria, the playground areas, those kinds of things, separated from the academic space. So, if the community wanted to use, have a meeting or something in the gym that night or a practice or whatever, it's separated from the academic space of the students. So, the layout of the building has separate, it's all together, it's all one building, but has a separate community area as opposed to the academic area where the classrooms would be. Right?
I think the answer to your question specifically, like with the playground spaces, it would be like Plaza Gap or Bellefonte, they'd be open to the community very clearly. One of the things that I got extraordinarily excited about, I didn't consider, but was brought up during our discussions about potentials, is a multi-surface space out at the new property also. That could be used for a lot of different things with a turf, to be able to get that kind of high-levels usage that you can't have on the natural grass fields.
And we wouldn't have, it wouldn't support as much because you wouldn't have bleachers and lights and all those sorts of things, but nevertheless, it'd be more than 75.
But that, absolutely, yes. People to use it, yes.
Ken, tell me what you'd like to do.
Well, listen, why don't we give, take another question or two? Mike, let's give you a break and get, let Ken talk and then we can get back to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, two points. I'm sure like you're going to put partitions, sliding partitions, like between the gyms and the cafeterias probably, so you can split them up for small meetings and whatever, you know, throughout the year. Most schools, I guess, have them, the big, big sliding walls, you know?
Right, well, the idea here is that it's two different spaces. So, you'd have a gym, which is completely by itself, and a cafeteria that's completely by itself. So, there's no reason, those walls are expensive, they're expensive to maintain, they break a lot. So, if it's, if you have a gym that's only being used for athletic purposes, or we can drop a net down if, you know, the snowy days and things, right? And then there's a separate space for cafeteria, the maintenance staff isn't setting up tables and closing it down. You don't have to, and again, with 650 kids, you may have gym every period of day, all five days a week. So, you need a space that's dedicated just for that. You can't take, you know, two hours off during lunch. So, there, the goal here would be to have separate independent spaces.
Yeah, and you do that for purpose, right? Maybe, I mean, if you want to do that.
Again, the gym can be divided in half, but the idea is that it's two different rooms.
Another point I just wanted to make, hopefully you'll have two or three rooms, specialty rooms for special needs kids and handicapped kids and wheelchairs and, you know, their own bathroom, maybe, maybe with a lift too for kids.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, those, the curriculum is something that we had set, but we'll continue to look at as far as the number of classrooms and then certainly number of classrooms for students with special needs.
Thank you very much for doing that. I see everybody over there writing notes, so I'm sure that there'll be some, some great outcomes from, and again, thank you everyone for your comments.
Go ahead.
One last comment. Looking at the design, I see the playground is in part of the athletic, or the athletic fields. Would it not make more sense to keep that away from the buses on the backside and let the athletic fields, the geometry of it be more rectangular?
Side was just flat. So, they would still have 300 yards of flat after that for, if they were going to line that for athletics and things like that. That was a question early on with the playground, should it be hidden in the back? Well, now on the weekends, if I come to the school to play or during the summer, well, now I have to have somebody walk around the back of the building to where the play area is. So, should the play area maybe be a little bit closer? Anyone in the community then could either walk or drive, park in the parking lot or the bus area and be able to get out. So, that's, that's a good question and that's something that we're kind of designing as well. You know, if the play area is right next to the cafeteria, so lunch is over, recess, kids can go right there, they don't have to walk around to the back of the building or walk to someplace else. So, they can easily get to it, easily get back. We don't want it to be too far away from a door so that students can get back in.
Athletic fields.
Yeah, again, that would.
Take away what percentage of the athletic fields?
It wouldn't. It's a good point. It's just a flat area, that's what's being depicted there. There'd be athletic fields within that, we wouldn't be losing any space by the play area. So, we'll.
That's not playground equipment, I think, for here.
Right. So, as we, as we develop that further, you'll see that in more detail.
While we transition, the other thing I would mention to all of you that are here, and I probably should have mentioned earlier, we spent a lot of time about, talking about where we were going to put the school on that hill. Different spaces, what worked, I mean, there were geological studies done and things. So, basically, the school will be about three-quarters of the way up the hill. We tiered it, tier one, tier two, tier three. And so, it would be not the top of the hill, but about middle of the hill. I would encourage all of you to drive out there and just look what a beautiful space that is. And I keep saying, the view is just going to be amazing, because if you go up to where that school's going to be located, you're going to be looking over the town of Bellefonte. It's just going to be a beautiful, I say every time I leave the high school, two things, just so you know. I, if I'm behind the high school, I look up and say, "There's our school coming." And second of all, if I have to dig the first hole for that school, it's coming, because I've been pretty committed to trying to get this, this project moving and things. But I would encourage you to drive up to the site and just go to that hill. You'll see the slopingness, I don't even know if that's a word, the slope of it. So, when he says that's just a flat area, that's because that's going to have to all be flattened out at that, that spot. As we excavate and build, it only makes sense that we build some flat spots into that hill because we're moving dirt anyway. So, I would encourage you to go look at the site as well.
John, do you remember a school that we visited about five years ago?
And it had, it was sort of in a, an area like that, and it had the big cafeteria windows and the kids would see deer coming up to the.
Yeah, up the back it dropped off.
Right, that was terrific. That would be so neat if that, if we had that.
I think you're on, Mr. Bean.
Okay. The estimated cost right now of what we're looking at, and this again stressing, estimated, is $46 million approximately. We currently have $3 million we've set aside over the last several years as monies to get this project rolling, as in paying some of the architect and/or construction management, some other engineering-type companies that gets this project going and started. The plan is to take our existing debt, which we have approximately 3.5, three and a half million dollars a year of debt payments, interest and principal, refund that, which is similar to refinancing your mortgage, only we're not going to refund all of it, we're going to refund parts of it to structure the payment stream. And instead of it being over in five to six years, it's going to extend out 20 years. We will also borrow some additional new monies by doing bond issues. We sell bonds out in the market, I can go into a lot of detail on this, but it is nine o'clock and I don't want to see anybody fall asleep while I'm talking. The bond issues, we sell them, it's a competitive bid, try to get the lowest interest rate, obviously, so we can have smaller payments. A lot of how this is going to work is going to depend on the bond rates that we can get based on our financial stability and our financial ability to pay, which is very good for a school district. And the goal is to have a no-tax increase to do this. Or, at a minimum, we will have a slight tax increase, but it will be built into the normal tax increase we might have and it won't be anything extraordinary. That's the plan right now. There's a lot of variables, as I said, there's an estimate of $46 million, like any good estimate, it's probably high, I'm hoping it is, and nothing comes in the other way. If mortgage rates, not mortgage rates, bond rates are favorable for us, and depending on how we do this, we have a bond, a financial management company that works with the school district that are experts in the bond market, will do different bond issues and refund parts of the existing bonds to make all this work. So, again, the plan is to have a zero-tax increase based on building this new building. Right now, we're looking at, we were looking at 40 million, I said it's coming at 46 million, I'm looking at something in between that. The way we're going to do this is with the existing bond payments, we've also been putting away roughly $250,000 to a half a million dollars a year in the last several years in the current budget. That $500,000 obviously will go away once we start building it, but we will roll that over into the debt payment, so you would see no increase budget-wise. It'd still be the 3.9 million plus the half a million, it would roll over to that. The question earlier was about the PlanCon process. We are getting funds from the grandfathered-in debt that the district did years ago. Now, we've refunded these over the years several times to take advantage of the interest rates dropping since 1997 when the middle school was done. The, every time we can do that, usually a five-year call, we've done that, we've looked at those. So, the way that works is when you make a debt payment, and we make usually two a year, November and May, one's just interest, one's principal and interest. What we do is we apply to the state with the form and then we get some money back through the PlanCon process. So, in theory, over those 20 years, you get X amount back. We've been budgeting about a half million to $600,000 a year that we get back on those debt payments from the state. We will keep some of that even if they don't put PlanCon back in, because we're not getting rid of all of that. The parts we get rid of and refund won't be available, but the parts that we keep that will still stay the payment flow, we will still get that money. We get, like I said, about 17 cents on the dollar for our bond payments. And if PlanCon comes back in, that'd be wonderful, that'll reduce our, our cash flow on those debts as we make those payments, apply for money back and get that back from the state. We will also have hopefully some cost savings by having a new building, obviously, utility costs, things like that should be reduced. There's no plans on eliminating positions, we will look at attrition going forward, so we don't, you know, we don't, not looking to get rid of any, any bodies that are actively working. We have positions available every year from retirements and/or moving away or, or whatever, going to another school district or something. So, we will be able to hopefully reduce some of the payroll if possible. We will also have hopefully savings in some other areas, obviously, supplies, we will be able to keep class size low, I know that was one question, there's no plan on increasing class size. We're looking at keeping it very low like we've been doing. Personally, I like it closer to 18, 19. I understand the teachers and everybody else likes it a little bit lower. So, that's what we look at. I think our highest class size in any elementary school right now is we have a couple outliers at 22, 23, maybe one at 24, majority of them are 18 and 19, the average. Anything else?
No, I would add, if you have been following the PARZ lawsuit, so PARZ is Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small School Districts. So, a group of Pennsylvania rural and small school districts, which Bellefonte was part of, sued the state for not providing a quality education or the funding needed for a quality education that was equitable across the state. It was a case that went for, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years it was going, and it was recently decided, it was argued last fall, and it was recently decided by the Supreme Court, or which court, Commonwealth Court perhaps, that small and rural schools have not been funded as equitably as they should be by the state. So, the state has been told, PDE and the state of Pennsylvania have been told that they have to find a better way to fund rural schools so that the students in rural schools and small schools have the same educational opportunities as those in wealthier districts. There's no plan for that right now, as you can imagine, the state hasn't really jumped up and said, "Yeah, let's just spend more money." But, as part of that, one of the things that I've already been questioning about is, and you all know. about is, and, and you all know it, why haven't we built this elementary school before now? Well, the, the budget hasn't been. We have been so confined, and the taxpayer have been bearing the burden of all of the monies to keep our schools going. In order to keep our programs, the things like building new schools have gone by the wayside. And so, part of this funding suit that I've been asked about is, what haven't we had in Bellefonte that we could have if we would've had a fair funding formula? And in Bellefonte, for thus, that's facilities. So, I have been pushing, and next week, we have a meeting with Representative Takehak, is it next week, two weeks from now, Representative Takehak. So, we've been talking to our legislators about how Bellefonte has not had equitable funding, is found in our, our buildings that are not in great shape. So, any push you can do with your legislators to, to push them to, to finally give us some fair funding from the state level would be greatly appreciated. So, hopefully, some of that money could come through. It would be great. PlanCon would be great. Any pressure that you, that you have with any of the legislators, you know, point that out, that Bellefonte's funding, we've been able to keep our educational programs, but we haven't been able to maintain buildings at that. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, we, we haven't been able to do the additions. We've done the necessary repairs, obviously. We have a list of what we call deferred maintenance, things we wanna do. It may be not at that critical level, but we've been able to knock some of that off. Obviously, we've tried not to put a lot of money into Bellefonte Elementary, because we knew we were gonna do something probably with that building. We've done boiler repairs, new boilers, things like that. So, we've done a lot of things there, but we've tried to hold back on some of the other things we wanna do. One, we didn't have the money, and two, if we could redo it, we didn't wanna put money into there when we were going to, hopefully, redo that building.
I think too, we've, we finally have, I, I have to say this, you know I do. So, we have finally started setting some money aside to, to, to address capital improvements to keep these buildings up to date. So, for a multitude of reasons, as has been mentioned, our facilities have been underfunded throughout the years. And it's been very difficult. Once you get to a certain point, it's, it's almost impossible to catch up, because we're, you're at the point where just trying to bring it up to code costs 80% of the new, of a new building, which is where we're at with, with Bellefonte Elementary. So, part of my interest in, in this design and coming up with a, say, a 20, somewhere between a 20- and 40-year lifecycle costs is so that we understand what items need to replace, be replaced in that time period, and we can figure out how much we need to budget in the, as a set aside specifically for maintenance and upkeep of that building, above and beyond the normal maintenance of, of an elementary building. So, so there are all ways that we're trying to address the issue going forward. I have to say, so, again, thank you to everybody, but I want to, so Damian, don't let me put you on the spot. If you've had a long night and you just need to rest, that's okay. But, Mr. Damian Spar is with us this evening as well. We just authorized a contract with his firm, SiteLogic, to be the construction manager for this project. Damian, do you wanna just kinda introduce yourself, and if you have anything to say?
And can you explain what you're going to do as the construction manager?
Hi, everyone. I'm Damian Spar. I'm Vice President at SiteLogic. I've been working kind of as a program executive here for Bellefonte, as we've worked ourselves through what I've called pre-design. So, what we've done to date is get enough information together to be able to have what I call an intelligent conversation that starts here and develops into the design of a school. As we work through the design phase, KCBA will have four phases of design. There's a schematic design phase, and then we will have a presentation. You'll see where, what the building outline looks like, where the rooms would be. It's not extraordinarily detailed, but, and there may be some alternate designs that we're considering. We'll review that with the board, we'll get some public input, and we'll move on to the next phase, and we'll, we will do an estimate. SiteLogic will do an estimate, we'll review that with KCBA and the district. We'll be presenting that, so that we see how we track as we move through against what is that concept estimate that Mr. Bean told us about a little while ago. After the end of the schematic design phase, we'll move into what's called design development, where we get some more detail, we understand the systems that are gonna be in the building, the types of HVAC systems, what types of lighting there's going to be, and really start to pick materials and things like that, and review alternates, not only to have scope options so we can manage our budget when the final numbers come in on bid day, but also to look at things, and Mr. Gazar was talking about lifecycle costing, we'll look at things like flooring, et cetera, to make sure that we are building responsibly for the future, not choosing something that has lots of maintenance, but not necessarily making the entire building out of terrazzo, because that would be a really expensive proposition. So, we wanna balance that out in design development, and then we'll move, after another presentation, another estimate, and updated schedules for how we're going to build the building, and really come to an end with occupancy. We'll move into construction documents. That's where all of the details for the bid documents are put into the design, all the specifications are developed, the front-end documents, which I call the rules for the project, get developed, and then we, one more time, do an estimate. As a construction manager, we will look at all those details and try and find things that are not complete in the drawings, things that we need better competition for. So, for example, if there's only one building control system that's specified, that particular vendor could bid the job and maybe ask us for more money than is fair. But if we have two or three that are specified, there's competition there, so we'll keep those costs down. The other thing that we'll do is we're looking at how we break the construction into bid packages. The State Separations Act requires that, in Pennsylvania, we have a general construction contract, a plumbing construction contract, an HVAC or mechanical construction contract, and electrical construction contract. That's what we call four prime. A lot of times, we break some things out. We break out fire protection, we break out kitchen equipment, et cetera. That saves us some money and gets us control over certain systems. After we do all that, and through the whole process, we're gonna be eyeing our bid period. What we're planning to do right now is be out to bid in a timeframe that allows us to start in the spring, and allows us to finish the following late fall. Why is that good? Because you're thinking, most school buildings are finished in the summer. It's really good, because contractors don't wanna have that big rush at the end and the risk of not getting done, or the risk of all the overtime to finish during a summer and allow a school to move in. So, if we're looking to finish at fall around Christmas time, that gives us a lot of time, which, which is called float. In case there's bad weather or something like that, and the schedule gets a little bit longer, we don't miss our move-in, and our kids are in there in the, the fall that we intend. So, we'll be managing that process as well. We will lead the bidding process in conjunction with KCBA. One day, we will stand here, and it'll be about a year from, I believe, March, April, and we will be reviewing bids that came in. And we'll be reviewing those alternates, so that the board can have a recommendation as to what to award and build. Then, we will go out and build, and we will have folks on-site to oversee the coordination, to oversee with others, the quality, and to keep the whole thing on track, so that we meet that end-date goal. And as Mr. Kelly alluded, at some point then, we'll start talking about furnishings and how we're gonna occupy the building. As a construction manager, we'll be assisting the district with how the furniture comes in, and the building systems are checked out, so that when the teachers arrive and the kids arrive, everybody's in comfort and the building works well. And because, under the strategy we have now, because we finished that building earlier than, right up against the summer timeline, we should have what's, what is a really easy opening, and not an opening that the teachers just got here last week, they're still unpacking their boxes, there's still punch lists, things, and incomplete items, even though we have occupancy. We are set up for a really good success the way we're sitting right now. So, that's what we're doing as a construction manager. One of the things that I promised the, the school district, and as we talked a little bit about traffic, as we look at the intersection and things that have to be done up there, there is a grant that is put out by the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED. That grant is called the multimodal grant. If, when, when we're talking about providing paths to the school, and paths that go up to the park, and connecting roads that may go up to the high school, and improvements to intersections, those things are eligible for these grants. We will be leading the charge to go after a grant for whatever monies are applicable there, to lower the costs that Mr. Bean talked about, and, and the community outlay for this project. So, there's lots of things going on that, that we're going to assist with. Mike and I worked at Altoona together for the Altoona High School that was an addition renovation project. That was, that was a very interesting and, and long and difficult project to, to get through design and build. We actually brought that in right under budget, and then we followed up, and even through COVID, brought that in on time together. So, we work well with KCBA, and I think, together, we will all do a good job, and I say that as all of us standing and sitting in front of you, as we prosecute the work and build a new elementary school for the community. Is that covered?
Yeah.
Can I say a few things?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Damian.
So, some of the people at this table were here for the track and the stadium project, and I think there's a learning lesson, having gone through that, also past efforts to do this, and past things that occurred with different building projects for the district. Our educators are really good, our administrators are really good at education. That's what they knew. They are not, they just don't have the time, the energy, the knowledge to be able to handle all of these things. So, one of the decisions this board made at the outset was to bring someone like Damian in earlier than normal, to be able to manage the process of building up for all of this. And that's why we're here with a lot of momentum, a lot of pieces in place. We're really making good project because of that decision. Moving forward, this person has to be all of our champion for this project, making sure that all the other independent contractors who are coming in to do the different parts of this project, he's gotta be the guy, guy who's keeping an eye on them, making sure they're doing what they need to do, cracking the whip, and just all in all, looking out for our interests. So, this is perhaps the most important element to this project. And we're fortunate, I think, to have Damian with us to do this.
And I promise, Mr. Bean, I'll do everything I can to keep the cost down. And what, what I, what I didn't get to say, because Mike was standing up here, is as we go through this process, you're gonna hear me say things like, that's not in the budget, or, that's a good idea, but we should make it an alternate, so we can decide how we wanna spend our money on bid day. And I have a joke with Mike. I don't like metal panels on school buildings, because they get dinged, and they are expensive, and all these other things. So, you'll hear, you're hearing me have some strong opinions about what we do with our design, so that the design is good, it's long-lasting, and it's really fiscally responsible, and that everybody here, as a group, and you, as folks that have had input, can look at this building in the end and say, we did the right thing.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, I'm excited for our community as a whole to be able to access these, this meeting online. As was mentioned in the announcement, CNET is recording this evening, as well as live streaming. Those, both of those items, the CNET recording and the CNET livestream, will be available later with closed captioning on our webpage, as well as on the CNET's website as well. So, thank you again to everyone from the community. I hope that we can have more of these sessions and get a lot of good feedback that we can incorporate into the final design. Thank you, Mr. Kelly and your team, and Mr. Spar for making the trip up here and really taking the time to, to engage with the community. As, as not, we didn't want this evening to be us presenting to you, but more just listening to you and finding out what your ideas are, so that they can be incorporated. So, with that, is any, anyone from the board have any other comments? Damian, do you have anything to, to say to close us out?
No, again, I just wanna echo, thank you all for coming. This is just the first step, and it's a very exciting first step. We look forward to engaging with the community as much as we can to get more and more input. As I think, Mr. Kelly or somebody said, I don't know who said it, this is a community school, and, and we want it to be a, a school that, that is for our community and can be the centerpiece, as I said in my opening remarks, for our district. So, thank you all. I know it's a late night, and I, I truly appreciate your coming out and, and talking with us.
Yes, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to, to create a building like this.
It is.
So, without entertaining, a motion to adjourn. Moved in second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Me and adjourn, thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.